...Town Council of Cave Creek, Arizona for Monday, March the 16th, 2015. We will begin the evening with the swearing-in ceremony of the newly elected council members. Let's carry on.
Can we call your name in alphabetical order, so we'll start with Susan Clancy? Do you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. Aye and state your name.
Aye, Susan Clancy.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties as town council member.
Discharge the duties as a town council member.
Of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona.
Of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
You may applaud if you wish.
Dick Esser? Right, do you raise your right hand, please, repeat after me. Aye and state your name.
Aye, Dick Esser.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Yes.
Would you like to read it?
Yeah, me too, I would.
I have a copy here for you. I wonder if you can repeat after me, but you can look at it if it's easier than looking, okay?
Whatever you say.
All right. Let's start over. Aye and state your name.
Dick Esser.
Repeat your hand.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties as the town council member of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, according to the best of my ability, so I do affirm.
Thank you. You. Steve Lamarr. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Steve Lamarr.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
As town council member of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona.
As town council member of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Do you raise your right hand, please? Aye and state your name.
I, Mark Lipsky.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
As town council member of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona.
As town council member of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Okay, the council of Cave Creek. The roll call, please, Carrie.
Councilman Esser?
Here.
Councilman Bunch?
Here.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Here.
Councilman Lamarr?
Here.
Councilman McGuire?
Right.
Councilman Lipsky?
Here.
Mayor Francis?
Here. Ellen, since you did so well.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Ellen. Call the public.
Everett Bell?
Didn't know I'd be first. Everett Bell, 5111 East Desert Hill, from Cave Creek, Arizona, citizen of Cave Creek for 12, 13 years. First, congratulations to the newly elected council members. Congratulations are in order. Second, I would like to encourage the mayor that, I did forget to say, Mr. Mayor and council, pleasure to be here today. I would encourage the mayor to try and continue the office hours program that was started. I think it is beneficial to the citizens, and I certainly have enjoyed it and appreciate the continuation of that. I don't know if there's been any intention not to, but this one will end mine. I'll be here for the support. Then finally, I'd like to read a letter that I wrote to our local newspaper. It may be published, but I wanted to share it with you all and with everybody that is here tonight. Dear editor, yes, our community has spoken, and the voice of over 1,800 citizens has been heard. Yes, the election has gone the way you predicted and wanted. There is no need for floating or further berating. The citizens of Cave Creek have spoken. Let their word be good and fine. Please, now let's let the community heal, and let's let the men who served this town and gave countless hours of their personal time go with dignity and respect. Please, let's give it a rest and turn now to the business of restoring our community pride. Now is the time to support our current town staff and their efforts. It is not the time to campaign for the return of the previous town manager. Let's give the new council members, the remaining council members, and the mayor our support and the opportunity to do their work. After all, we, the citizens, elected them, no one else. Thank you.
Thomas McGuire.
Thomas McGuire, 3846, North Spur, Cave Creek. First of all, I'd like to thank Mrs. Carmen Jol, who's still here. Thank you for saying that I can't give up, we can't give up hope, and I think that's very important. I think that's something we need to move forward with. I thank the people who have served on the last council, and I think that there are many people here who work with them, and I hope that all citizens will hold all of us responsible. I thank the staff through all of these difficult times. Carrie, Peter, we have David, Barbara, and me. Did I miss anybody?
Yes.
Mrs. Sauervery? Thank you so much for your service. It's not easy for you going through these changes. It can be very difficult. And finally, I want to say that trust is not to be given, trust is to be earned, and in this council, I think it's going to be very important for us to earn trust of all the citizens. Thank you.
Ms. Carrie?
I have no other speakers.
If there's anyone else who wishes to speak, call the public, it's open.
Good evening, council. I just want to welcome the new members to the board, and I look forward to seeing what you can do for this town.
Call the public is still open. Does anyone else wish to speak? Council will proceed. I'm going to back it up to the public announcements for those that were not here at 6 o'clock. On March 19th, council will be meeting, and of course, the public is invited, and it is for the first look at the general plan. And I hasten to add, we are in no rush to approve the general plan. It is a vision of the community, and we're not going to rush it. We're going to take our time with it, and with all the citizens' input. So this is just the first of many meetings on the general plan. Secondly, yesterday's is coming up this weekend, do support that. And third, the office hours. As long as my schedule permits, I will do them. The citizens seem to benefit from them Thursday, 8 o'clock here in the council chambers. Town manager?
Yes, we're here in council one for a thing. On March 17th, we plan on opening the west side of the circle downtown area, Paco Ma, at near E-Tank. We've been working on that for a few months now. The public works crew and the community set down a lot of work. It should hold somewhere around 65 parking spaces, so we're looking forward to opening that on the 17th. Thank you.
Council is going to proceed. The first, if they consent, agenda item approval of the February 17th, 2015 River Council Leading Men's Motion to Approve, council. Thank you, council. All those who favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes are counted. Thank you, council. On to the first of two agenda items. Council discussion and approval of resolution R. 2015-08, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, for the construction of a bike lane on Cave Creek Road from Carefree Highway to Puma Road. That's true.
Thank the mayor, members of council. About years ago, the town applied for and received a grant from Merkle Association Government providing funds to the Arizona Department of Transportation. The town was the sponsor for the grant, but they invited Carefree to turn Carefree in. So this grant covers the installation and implementation of bike lanes from the Carefree Highway along both sides of Cave Creek Road all the way to Puma, down to Puma to Stagecoach, and down to Arlington to the boundaries of Carefree, for a total of, I believe, 84 miles. Previously, the council had entered into an intergovernmental agreement with ADOT to cover the cost of the design, and as well as an IGA with Carefree to cover the local match of that design. In effect, ADOT almost paid for the entire design, so the town's came up with a very low for that. This is an intergovernmental agreement for the construction of bike lanes themselves, and this council approves this at all. We will follow up with a mention made with Carefree to cover the remainder of the local match. It's mentioned in here, in this agreement, that the total share is about $250,000. Cave Creek's, of course, will be around a third of that, mainly because the amount of area is mostly about 2/3 of Carefree. Also, we have different types of challenges in each community. The idea is to add bike lanes within the existing right-of-way or using the right-of-way acquisition. And just then, we are now at 95% design review, and I believe consultants have met with our needs as well as the needs of Carefree. We would be modifying medians in the town core, where we are median-rich, not removing them, but narrowing them in many cases, and modifying them for safety to offer crosswalks in future in the appropriate places, hopefully better places than where they are now. So those are all issues that we've worked on, we've decided to stop to this point. Once this is approved and the IGA with Carefree is approved, the project will go out to bid, be advertised. Construction is intended to start in July, so our next fiscal year. We've asked that they concentrate on working on the town core in the summertime when the business is slower. Business access will be kept open throughout that time, and then they will move to the outlying areas, going east of Puma and south of Carefree Highway. I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions from council. Councilwoman Clancy, question?
I do, I have a couple of questions. I think I was in Carefree when they did this whole thing, so I have some background on it. My question is, with regards to the roads we presently have, you said they will go within those boundaries, that we don't have easements to take the roads out larger or wider?
Correct.
So how does that work with bike lanes on each side, given how crowded it is during certain times of the year in the downtown area? And how will bikes continuously proceed through there based on the way, say, the motorcyclists are there, or the closing off of different parts of the road at this point in time? And how wide will they be? Because I see them like this, and I see them like this, so.
Councilwoman Clancy. At present, the cyclists come through town light on the stripe or blocks of that. These will be approved, bike lanes, 45 feet width with a stripe that separates them from traffic. We have 80 feet minimum of right-of-way traveling through the town core. Our right-of-way varies from 130 feet to 110 to 80, and then expands again in Carefree. So that's the idea of minimizing the medians but keeping them in place, since that's where we can gain the room for the right of way. Once the project is complete, there will be a slurry coat put down over everything so it covers all the construction that has happened. The town has recently gotten approval from MAG to pass on funding that will cover that slurry, cost of slurry, so everything is, is going to go for us, except for one issue.
Any questions, councilman?
No, my concern is just safety of those who ride those bikes.
Yeah, I understand.
Councilman Lipsky, question?
Hi, Ian. First of all, I want to say that I'm thrilled to have anything to do with bike lanes in Cave Creek. Just a couple of questions. One is, you mentioned that July is the anticipated start of construction. Is there an anticipated timeline for construction?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. The project is anticipated to take no more than six months to complete. So why do you think?
And I apologize, I haven't been this intimately involved until, obviously, until today. In this agreement, the state sort of protects itself ad nauseam through the copy here, and to their credit, the town is responsible for overrides, the town is responsible for acts of God, the town is responsible, responsible, responsible. So one of the issues that are mentioned is if the ultimate total cost exceeds the federal availability of funds, Cave Creek is responsible for that overreach. Is there a point, or what point in time, do we, will we know what that federal amount is?
As I mentioned, Councilwoman Lipsky, members of council, we are currently at the 95% point of the design, so we know very well what the cost is.
Again, it's, well, you're saying 95%. So we're pretty certain that the costs are going to be the cost.
Yes.
That there won't be any big surprises for Cave Creek in terms of.
We have tried to give the consultants all of our concerns for turn lanes, median breaks, things like that, so it is all planned for now.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any questions from council?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
What about here, council? Do you have questions?
No.
No questions, you got questions. Okay, we'll go to the public. Ian, note to South, if we're going to start in July, do oppose July 4th.
Keep that in mind.
Public comment, there's public comment? I will bring this back to council for motion, council events.
I move to approve resolution R. 2015-08, a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, close friends, for the construction of a bike lane on Cave Creek Road from Carefree Highway to Puma Road.
Second, motion has been made in a second. Councilmember Esser?
As the former co-chairman of Small Communities Coalition, this is something I've been interested in for a long time. I partnered with my friend David Schwann, mayor of Carefree, who's now retired. We had a series of meetings, we made a small contribution to MAG, Merkle Association Governments, and we made it happen. And mind you, this is just the beginning, and opens the door to further grants that will benefit not only the two communities, but the area as well. Ian, it's been a long time. You do good work. Thank you.
Councilman McGuire, you have a second?
Yes, I think this is an important opportunity for Cave Creek, twice as we're here. They're, like everyone else, they're welcome. It's not safe at present going through Cave Creek, particularly the curve just this side of Harrells, and the Buffalo Check is a very difficult area. And I think for the safety of everyone, and especially our guests that are coming in with bicycles, and are more and more resistant to bicycles, this is an important issue.
Councilwoman Lipsky? Again, I first arrived in town in 2003, and one of the first things I did when I got here was buy a bike and start riding, and it's a godsend, I know a lot of people that this is finally happening, and I'm thrilled to be involved.
I was pleased with this project and very happy to be a part of it, as you just said, when we first approved it. But it's sort of ironic, it's the first day back, and we're taking another giant step forwards for not only bikes, but downtown, because the bike traffic and the pedaling that goes on is just as important as any other recreation that goes on in Cave Creek, and part of what makes the town eclectic. So I was proud to have supported it, and I'm proud to support it, and I feel like they rode a horse. Might do.
Do you know what everybody else has said?
Councilman Bunch?
You know, it's just the, I was barely back home, called Ian, and the phone said, this is not one of those things that they came in, they're going to make us one lane each direction. And I was thrilled to find out that it was not one of those long-term planning things that would destroy traffic in town, so support this as well.
Carrie, does this have financial implications in the rule, please?
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Councilman Bunch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Aye.
Councilman Lamarr?
Yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Mayor Francis?
Yes, by unanimous vote, 7 to 0, the motion passes. Thank you, council. Agenda item number two, council discussion and appointment of a council member to serve as vice mayor. The mayor placed this item on the agenda, and with that, and in the spirit of beginning the healing process in his wonderful community, I place a nomination for vice mayor, Steve Lamarr. Nominations are still open? The chair hearing and seeing that there are no further nominations. The rule, please, Carrie?
Councilman Bunch?
Mayor, can I make a couple of comments first?
Absolutely, council.
There's five people sitting in this council, on this dais right now, that I've served with before, and we were in the midst of the largest economic downturn this country has seen since the Great Depression. An incredible job was done, and Steve Lamarr was one of the people that was here at the time, and I wholeheartedly support this nomination, in particular in light of the fact that he's now retired. He is an attorney, I guess he's still under the bar, Steve, is that right?
Yes.
And hopefully, there was a period of time when Cave Creek got a lot, I mean, a lot of lawsuits against us, and we lost a lot of them. And I'm hoping that Mr. Lamarr as vice mayor will help guide us more so to keep those things from happening, because we can't afford to spend money on lawsuits. That's all I've got to say, is yes.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Aye.
Councilman Lamarr?
You're stuck, Steve, yeah?
With great humility, and for all of Cave Creek, yes.
Councilman McGuire?
Yes.
Councilman Lipsky?
Yes.
Councilman Esser?
I too would like to say a few words during this last go-around, and as Councilman Bunch mentioned, many of us have worked together a number of years in the past. And he mentioned the downturn and the tight money situation where we are, and the former town manager did an excellent job of cutting things, and Steve has my support and will as we move forward. So I vote yes.
Mayor Francis?
Yes, by unanimous vote, 7 to 0, Councilman Lamarr is the vice mayor of Cave Creek. As I did with the outgoing council, I gave each of the four members a chance to say for, well, not farewell, say what they need to say for the community I now offer, is to the newly elected council. Councilman Esser, thoughts?
Well, I thought I was retired, but as Steve mentioned, and as many of you know, I wanted to live in Cave Creek since I was a little boy. I love this town. I've always had a good rapport with the staff, those of the ones that are left, and I think we need to move forward. We have to provide the united front, and this is the team to do that. We're not a slave. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clancy?
I see a lot of faces of people I know, and some new friends that I've made along the way as we've gone through the process, and it's a new beginning. But there's still a lot to be done, and I think that the way the votes went, there's still 45% who, I believe, are probably thinking they got to show me first. So we hopefully will be able to do that and have good, clear discussion and transparency in everything that we do, and that's most important for everyone, and I appreciate all that that's been done. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lipsky?
Excuse me, like Councilman Esser, I've wanted to live here since I was a little boy too. boy, too. I just didn't know it until two thousand and three. And from the moment I arrived, I didn't want to leave, and I regret that, that, that I was forced to a few years back, and the fact that I was able to return is, I'm still trying to doubt how, how wonderful that is. And the fact that I'm sitting up here is just unbelievable, and I thank those of you who voted for me. I hope that those of you who did not will find something to like in, in how I served the town. I've got a few friends in the audience here who have already threatened to throw a shoe at me if I do anything to compromise the town. I can only imagine how some of you would feel if you didn't vote for me, so I'm going to do my very best, and, and I hope that's good enough. Thank you.
If you wish, applause, then. Vice Mayor Lamar?
So, every time I reflect about Cave Creek, I think of really two major turning points. The first one was in nineteen eighty-six, and Mayor Jackie Davis came down and said she wanted me to come and be on the planning commission because we were working through the first general plan. And then I think of my dear friend Luke Theris, who's here, my dear friend Martha Arnold, who were right there, and the old folding chairs and tables over here, fighting the first big fight for Cave Creek as a unique, eclectic, beautiful, protected town. And I think the next big turning point was, is, is Dick and Ernie alluded to, was the recession, because it took us high surprise. We had been living on expansion and development fees for thirty years, not just in Cave Creek, but in Arizona. We had a staff and town manager, and I mean no disrespect to you, but those were hard times, and Osama led us through those times, and staff sacrificed, and we saw it through. We saw it through in a good way. And so I feel like I never really had a chance to see what we could do when we weren't, you know, the greatest recession that Arizona ever had as a town councilman. And we have that chance now, and we, and we can only do that with all the citizens. There's bright people on both sides of this political issue, and I could debate with you all day long about who's right and who's wrong, and, and I'm sure you could with me. But now's the time for us to take another step. Now's the time where we, we have an economy coming back, we have the resources, we have opportunities, we need to take advantage of it. And I thank the mayor for making the nomination. I've worked with some of these folks, and it's a blessing. Every time we made a decision, right or wrong, agree with this or not, and we didn't agree all the time, it was for the best, in the best interest of the town, first, last, and overall. And that's all I can promise you. I may not agree with what you have to say, but if you have a good thought and you have support, and you're there with the best interest of Cave Creek, I'll be with you. Thank you.
There are two things that I'd like to say. One is, over fifty-four percent of the electorate voted. I know that this council represents all of the voters who voted and even those who didn't vote. The second thing I want to say, I do not say for dramatic effect, nor to take the spotlight away from the four people that are newly elected. And I say it because it's being rumored in town, and it's being reported, and inasmuch as you have four brand-new council people up here, what I meant, I want to make note of is something that's going to happen new in two thousand and sixteen, and that is, this is your mayor's last term. And I came to this decision with my wife at the last regular election. I mean, that's nothing at all to do with the recall. Each of us has our internal guidance systems, and I went to mine, and what it was telling me is, is, and a plate of weight is, my god, boy, you've been mayor of this town long enough, give this town a break. And the gratitude that I have for all of you allowing me to serve, I will express that at another time. But I do this now because just as you have a new, brand-new council, in two thousand and sixteen, you're going to have a brand-new mayor, and that mayor come from this council or they come from the community itself, but it's certainly going to change the political dynamics. Motion to adjourn, council? Come on out.